All right, I'm going to call it a way of the Hancock County Commissioners Meeting for August 20th.
I move to adopt the agendas presented with the exception of moving items A through D and 10D as requested.
Second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any public comment? Right, seeing none.
I move to approve the minutes of August 6th, 2024 Commissioners Regular Meeting is presented.
Second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right, we've got some employee recognition this morning.
First, I'm going to move to recognize and thank Ralston Beans for his 25 years of service at Hancock County.
25 years, only 15. Motion's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right, next.
I'm going to move to recognize and thank Robert Connery for his 15 years of service at Hancock County.
Second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to move to recognize and thank Marisa Giofri-Fredo for five years of service to Hancock County. I'm so sorry, I was so afraid of butchering you, man.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, congratulations.
Say cheese, Marisa.
All right, thank you for comments.
All right, so now we have the minutes to be open for the inmate medical services. And we have a, we have a lot of concern, a couple ones.
Tim, do we have a couple of demos or what, something about information, additional information?
Yes, I didn't know how to handle it, I forwarded it to Michael, the emails from Michael.
We need to decide one of them, we didn't even get yet.
Okay.
So that other one that said it was going to come Saturday, I haven't received it last year. And the vendor instructions in here quite clearly say any proposal received after the proposal opening date. So even, you could say if it arrived Saturday, came here, or even yesterday, well, you haven't opened them yet, so.
Yeah.
But after proposal opening date and time shall be eliminated in consideration and returned to the vendor unopened, so I mean that.
Okay, so that was, that was my question, was that there was a date for submission?
And they didn't make that, and they knew it didn't make that, that's why they sent him the email.
Yeah.
Okay, Robert, since we.
Yeah, I never received it, so if it did come here, I'm not sure where it is, but it's. Well, is there a traditional delivery time of day, they come all day?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're. So this would be a shame, though, if we had a decent bid that we didn't get.
I don't know if yesterday's mail was checked.
I just wondered if she must have gone down this morning first thing, because I had mail that was thrown in my box.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So. Hill suggested, Commissioner Clark's suggestion is maybe we put it off a little later in the meeting in case something comes in, but is that likely?
I mean, the correspondence in the center had it being delivered here on Saturday, of course.
Right.
There really probably wouldn't have been anybody around unless they, they knew enough to go down to, to like, maybe the.
Just dispatch.
Dispatch, yeah.
Did he say how it went, because if it came like FedEx or UPS, it might go back to the center.
It was in his emails.
Come back today.
Didn't that, but I think it was.
He had a thing. Doesn't say what it is, just tracking them.
USPS.com track.
Oh, it's, yes. Postal service. Postal service.
So we could.
Lunch gets here.
I could track, I could track that, I could go, after I do my agenda items, I could run up and track that number online and see where, where it is in the process. If it's been, if it says it's been delivered, maybe it's here someplace in the building, I don't, I never check that tracking number to see.
So that may be proved to do before we, because once we also.
Oh, right. Hey, you're done. We're trailing.
Right.
All right, we had the note you to track, so I think I should table it for now.
Okay.
And then if we, we, well, we'll see later in the meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, normally, again, why we put it upfront to the agenda is because, like we talked about last time, we open them, that gives staff time. In this case, there's no way we're going to go through that today, so.
Yeah, it would be highly impossible.
Right.
Yeah. You have tracking number.
Yeah, that's.
If you have it, I don't have my phone with me, so. Can I borrow that Gmail? Can I borrow that?
What do you have?
He's tracking them. It's in the second page, there we go, we didn't take that.
I'll go get it.
That's my old, here's the number.
That's my number?
Yeah. I'll look at that.
All right.
I'll go get this.
All right, so let's move on. All right. You two, you've got some agreements with the annual control officer?
Yeah, so the town of Gulesboro actually submitted that to us. We had also received a request from Winter Harbor, and they must have shared that information with Gulesboro as well, so that's what you have in front of you right now. The only other issue I think I mentioned in my note was that the proration of it, whether or not, which we have done historically in the past, whether or not we could prorate the agreement accordingly, and presumably, I gave you the sheet, but there's a couple of ways you can do it, but really, if you check factored by day, it would be about 990.35 that they'd have to pay for their annual stipend fee, so.
And that's, we had done that in the past.
We did it for other ones that joined in afterwards.
I think it's, I think that's appropriate, I think that's appropriate, so.
Is that in the documents, or?
It's not referenced in the thing itself.
Does it need to be?
I mean, we certainly.
I mean, it's, it's a blank here.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing yet, there's nothing that says one way or the other. It mentions the fee, but if you decide to do that, then obviously, we'd adjust accordingly and notify them, and invoice them as well, so.
I should do a whole note.
Well, and that's what past practices, that's what, so would you like that included in the motion?
If you wanted, that would make it 100% clear, so.
And, and that's in the MOU, no, that's in the ACO agreement or the MOU?
So that would be the agreement essentially. The section eight of the agreement itself talks about compensation.
And the agreement.
Says Hancock County and the town of Gulesboro.
Eight A would be.
And pro.
Yeah. A prating amount of 90.
A prating. What was it, 990.35? I think I sent that to you as well, if you could hear it.
And prorate the fee, is that what it is?
The annual statement.
Okay, so I'm going to move to approve the 2024 Regional Annual Control Agreement between the Town of Gulesboro and Hancock County as presented, prorate the annual stipends to $990.35.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'm going to move to approve the 2024 Regional ACO MOU between the Town of Gulesboro and Hancock County.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Have any airport agenda, anything of the airport agenda with the changes? Uh, no, all items have been removed, right?
Is it, well, the offer letter part has been removed, but the just compensation, as I understand it, Julie Roy is still talking about, so.
Only this been removed?
Only the offer letter.
Only the offer letters, what, should have been?
D?
That came in way too late, too late yesterday to get the offer letters perused and corrected and.
Okay, so what I, so I actually removed items A and D, because I assume that the the compensation and offer letters, excuse me, the just compensation and offer letters were linked, but they're, they are not.
There are two different letters.
Contained within each item.
Okay, so I removed items A through, A through D, so I probably should.
We, we can just table all of this if it, if it, it's not going to make that much difference.
Yeah, as I read them, I thought that they were intrically linked, but, and I actually removed them, so I would have, we have to take that to the end of that. If it doesn't matter, I think it would be cleaner to do the.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, let's just.
I'm looking at it, I don't understand, what's the difference between A, B, C, and D, is there a difference in any of these except who the, what it goes to? Dollar amounts, in dollars?
That, that's correct, that's correct.
Why did we remove any of them, if not all?
We, the intent would have been just to remove the offer letters to each one of those.
But the offer letters are with the just compensation?
They, they don't, correct, they're two different letters.
Yeah, see, I assume, I realize there were two different letters, I assumed that they were intricate, that they were tied together, that's why I.
Tied with the, with the recipient of easement?
Uh, no, I, as I read this, and obviously I was wrong, the acquisition just compensation letter and offer letter were tied together.
To the same person.
To the same person.
And they're not?
They're tied to the same person, but they're two different letters.
Yes, yes, that, that's, that's correct.
Yeah, so.
Well, once, once an easement, once a limit, correct?
Uh, they're, it's part of the easement acquisition process. The just compensation letter is basically letting them know what fair market value was for that parcel, and then the, the offer letter is offering them that, that value for that parcel, that, that make better sense?
Yeah, that's why I thought.
So there were two documents for each recipient of.
Correct, correct, and then there'll be a third document, which actually will be the purchase and sales agreement.
So, and why aren't we ready today to act on these four?
Because the um, offer letter came in really late yesterday afternoon after going to legal to be cleaned up, and I, I just wasn't comfortable, I had all the information correct, because I was scurrying around to get it on there, so that was why I just.
Yeah, if I were the recipient of this, I would want both, yeah, that's.
Okay.
Where are they moved?
Yeah, so they're not.
Yep, then I'm, I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Yep, sorry about that mess up.
Request, good morning.
As you know, you highly approved for us, purchase of new photocopier, along with other departments recently. We've tried it out for a couple of months, and we've come to realize that we need to request having an external finisher.
What is an external finisher?
It coates and.
Okay, Steve, I was wondering what, I kind of imagined that's what it was, but.
We thought we could get away with it, just to save some money on the initial expense, but it's very labor intensive.
And, and the old ones have?
The old ones did have them, so let's step back a little bit, so.
So I'm going to move to approve a purchase of one Xerox Versamix C7125, external finisher, delivered and installed on the copier in the EMA's office with a sum of $1,200 to be paid from.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you.
You.
All right, we've got some G O requests.
Just one minute.
No, okay.
I'd gladly let you introduce it, if you'd rather have it that way.
No, that's fine.
Okay, I'm going to move to approve hiring Victoria Watkins of Orland as part-time corrections officer effective August 31st, 2024, at A grade 9A with no benefits.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye. I'm going to move, uh, to approve, uh, to approve moving full-time corrections officer Galen McDonough to part-time corrections officer effective September 2nd, 2024.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to move to approve moving part-time corrections officer Colton Tibbetts to full-time corrections officer effective August 31st with full benefits as requested.
Second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Uh, probably going any further. The employment of part-time people before, we used to say on-call as needed, and unlike full-time employees, there's no expectation anywhere from part-time people, so they don't have, they don't develop any real equity in their employment. And I think it's important for us to identify that when we hire them, that they, that they're hired on the expectation that they're on-call as needed, after discretion of the employee, so that they can't come in and say, I didn't get any work, and I was expecting work, and I had equity in my job, which they don't have, so. I'd just like to see in the future that we make that out of the motion, that's on-call as needed, that's a discretion.
They always have that.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, item D's been removed.
Please delay.
Yeah, yeah. Did you want to talk about this next one, or?
E, F, and G?
Yeah, or, I've read them and I understand them.
What, what happened is that last meeting, I misspoke, um, they didn't, they caught it, that, um, I took it as we were just, we were, had the agreements, but we just need to vote approve these, these contracts, officially approve them under.
Yeah, and then that's what this is all about.
No, no, this is, that is, these are the.
These are the current ones, but.
They get it through the end of the, end of the month, end of the year, they should just get it to the end of the year.
That's what I, okay, so I'm going to move to approve the medical health services provided to Hancock County Jail between Sarah Willie and Hancock County, and authorized the chair to sign.
Second, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to move to approve the agreement for nursing services provided to Hancock County Jail between Nancy Frost Hancock County and authorized the chair to sign.
Second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye. I'm going to move to approve the contract for pharmacy services provided by, to the Hancock County Jail between Bangor Drug LLC and Hancock County and authorized the chair to sign.
Second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, Sheriff, got a retirement for?
Before you make any motion, I have a, I understand that you're going here to basically work with the technology in fact, being the part-time employee tool on the flow, I think the motion should be recognized, that he's leaving, moving from the role. Which is what we always think with part-time.
So, but we need effective date, right? That was one of the questions we didn't.
No, we never did, usually what happened is that because of inactivity, we would remove somebody from the roles. This isn't the case, this guy's actually getting done, and I don't know what that is, I don't think it makes a difference. What we're going to do is acknowledge that he's no longer working, we're removing him from the, from the role, which is the standard process.
HR just needs to know what the termination date is.
If you, if you've got one more.
Yeah, and I don't have one, which is why we, we put the request into the sheriff's office, I know. But that, it just wraps everything up into a new envelope, so that we know, and also, if there's any other benefits or anything else to people that process, they know what they've worked through, now in this case, part-time, I get all that, but I'm just saying, it's through practice, but no. But we have a date that's certain enough.
That was my second statement.
Do we have a date?
A date, the date was active retirement. Yes, we have a date, but it was on his letter and on email.
So can we take?
I'll get that for her.
Yeah, because I. All right, we can table it for now. I think he's just, he's going to have to wait.
August 10th.
Okay, so we should move to remove retiring part-time deputy, patrol deputy Michael Bries from the county payroll, is that what?
Effective, well.
Effective, yeah, effective August 10th, 2024.
Right.
Michael, is that?
Yeah.
Chief, that's, yeah.
Second. Yes, that's second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, maintenance. We've got some things for, some quotes for camera systems?
Uh, yes.
You see that among the three were recommended GovConnection. Well, it was recommended by the IT director.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah.
I'm going to move to approve the purchase of a new camera system for the courthouse campus for a total cost of $23,795.17 to be paid for without the funds as requested.
Second motion. Sorry, you answered as the general contractor installation?
That's right.
Sorry, that was from GovConnect.
GovConnect. Well, that's what the request was, that's why I said it was.
Absolutely.
Is that clear, is that clear enough, or would you rather that I mention?
I don't clearly see it on here, but if that's what they say, then that's, it's definitely say it on this.
I'll, how about I add from GovConnections, is that what it is?
Thank you, yeah.
Great. Yeah, you're. She doesn't say that one yet.
Well, it does, yeah, I shouldn't say the motion, so.
And, and I'll second that motion, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Additional phone lines.
13A and 14A, go yellow, really. Same reason for both.
10.
Yeah, so, so during the training period, the vendor discovered that the new system does not work, and is not capable of performing some of the things that we do with the old system, dispatch, for example, transferring calls away to other agencies, so there, this, this system requires us to. Which ties up two phone lines, we have six current centric lines, which consolidates doing well as well. At, at this changeover, so whenever they get a chance, they, they do away with that, which the system, our current system allows us to do. With that addition of additional phone lines, with the six lines down there, there's many times where we're transferring local calls at a time, to get pages, that ties up all the lines. So they came back with, they could convert our six centric lines into twelve simple lines for roughly the same cost. Question then, with the reliability of copper lines and internet lines, we've had some experience with other agencies who have internet phone systems that go down off our service line, there was concern there as well, so they, they recommended adding a possibility of copper pods lines, so when a call doesn't go through the internet, it rolls over to the copper lines, so we can still communicate. Having said all that, adding those six, eight, nine extra lines requires additional recording licenses, because those lines are available to take and receive calls as well, which are lines that are all recorded for long-term purposes. To have those lines recorded as well, requires additional recording licenses to our existing keeper's server. We, we had a few licenses that were clearing up, that were in there as well, that we had available, so I'm purchasing quality licenses, but to have the recording capability, not only in the RCC, but to the sheriff's office as well, whatever. So for example, detective, he's make a phone call to a witness or suspect, that's recorded as well, so the, these lines would be recorded that are coming in to, to the RCC, but also the sheriff's office. So the good side is, we don't have to purchase additional data storage, our system is capable. And the, the rub is that those two lines are both being recorded, even though they're transferred to some channels, which they basically told us, that's just what it has to be, that's what the system works, which is still circulated.
So, your purchase, those are purchases, that's, that $3,800 is purchased additional license?
One-time purchase of the license.
Okay, it's a one-time purchase, it's not a digital purchase.
No, there, there may be some, some minor implications on our annual service, even conditional lines, but I believe I built that into my budget already, so. This is just one time fee.
All right.
Hook these up.
So I'm going to move to approve the purchase of additional phone lines from Equiture for a total cost of $3,828, which such sum to be paid from Harper Funds, authorized the chair to sign.
Second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
It's never good, that's fine.
I checked one. This is related?
Yeah, 14A is the monthly additional cost for doing the same thing, and in addition to what Bob said, there's another concern too, was I think that a privacy issue, where we put stuff on hold. Correct, so the, the other way, I don't know if you sat through the training with Sarah, is when you put a call on hold, it goes into this parking queue that everyone has access to. We, we had a concern that some, and doesn't readily show which line that call goes to, there's a, a number assigned to it, and our concern was if somebody picked up that by accident, then you have some poor, a news clerk all of a sudden is listening to somebody asking if they can't put back a hold, we don't know what the call can't going to, their plan was to separate the sheriff's office and RCC to its own trunk, so that we don't have that cross. If there's somebody picking up the line, it's destined for us.
So, in other words, sheriff's part put a call on hold?
It's only you, you're the people that can access that, take the call, it's either sheriff's office or the RCC versus the universal.
Oh!
So that, yeah, so that was, so these are some of, these are some of the, the operational aspects that we were not aware of until we actually asked a lot of questions, had more questions that were somebody. I, I think the, the system is a cookie cutter system that works for 99% of places that they go. Or a little different. And by the way, so we don't necessarily need to be picking up a call for you know, like I said, you know, probate. Where, because as soon as you pick that line up and, and put it back, park it, put it on hold, it assigns it a different parking number. If you're looking at number 701, well, it's not there anymore. Now the call might be 722, and you're looking.
Yeah.
So that's what this business service agreement is, is the additional phone lines that Bob needs, but it also segregates it so that somebody else can't pick it up. Sheriff office and RCC can do that.
But that's a monthly cost.
That is correct.
So, have you already, do we already have this worked into the budget for next year?
No.
In IT year. So we need to
So that, that's not the money that you were talking about?
Correct, no, my money is a one-time fee. And this is a monthly, this is a monthly cost.
That is in Chuck's budget.
That's right.
Are we replacing something, Chuck?
No, this is an addition.
This is an addition, so there's no, so let's just make sure we add it to the budget. All right, any other questions?
I hate to add budgets, but
We, we, we would be able to leave it as it is, if that's a month round, but they, you know, we consolidate, taken away the, the centric system requirements of conferencing lines to transfer them out. It's kind of a necessity.
So I'm going to move to approve the contract with consolidated communication for SIP fronts for a monthly cost of $283 in authorized chair assignment.
Second motion.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, so we're doing that now, so in this current budget, you're going to have to
That's correct.
Sit that in.
Monica can add it to that. Home budget.
Yeah. Well, not add it, that budget is set.
That's right.
Fine, you have to pay for it.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta have funds to pay for it somehow, till the new budget takes.
Right.
Okay, so maybe also, now we're on to our AI policy.
Yeah, and as BNC and Danny was supposed to be here for that, but since I see he's not here, I can't answer those questions. But questions for you, aren't they? We got tabled on those.
I, they look pretty boiling plate. I, I read them. I didn't have, I mean did you have, anybody else have questions?
No, we haven't.
All right, listen.
Okay, so we're, uh, move to approve the AI use policies present.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
This one, though, I did want to speak to a couple issues of the security.
Yeah.
Are, are you prepared or is this a man?
I may be able to help some, but I, I didn't prepare it, so I was hoping Danny would be here, but
We haven't seen any of this. I haven't seen any of this.
The security?
Right. Or AI. So I'm going to move table this item to a future meeting?
I think OPNC should be tabled till always just the action on the department manager's seat.
Perhaps you can take this back to Danny. The only, one of the problem issues, it's not a problem, it's just an issue that law enforcement's required to videotape certain questioning.
Correct.
There also, they have they have a policy or a practice of videotaping individuals. And I think those should be excluded from the security.
Right, and we've got something that we put exclusion for.
Yeah, I, I talk about that, but I will not, I think it's important that we don't if we don't include that type of activity, because it's exclusive to the sheriff, it's not, uh we don't even have a right to look at those. I mean, I wouldn't have a right to store those, so plan those destroyed or whatever, so I mean, just look at that emphasis on that, okay?
Will do.
Okay, so, so I'm going to move to table C. But do you want me to reconsider B? I mean, I I read B, and I didn't see those, but quite honestly, I wasn't thinking about the issue you brought up. I don't know if that issue also resides at B?
No, I don't see it. I don't even see it, yeah, I mean, I don't.
So we're already, okay. So does somebody, so we haven't taken action on C?
The only issue we have on the floor, though, is that the property heads haven't had the ability to look at that. What was policy and make a comment?
Well, my feeling is that they should look at it, and we, you know, if, if something comes up, we should revisit it. Visit it. It's nothing to keep us from revisiting it.
Ready to move?
So I, I, that was a motion, move table this item to a future.
Which was B or C?
C. We took action on B.
We did, okay, C, I, I, others in favor?
Aye.
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 So, it sounds like the next item is the exact same issue that we had in EMAs that
That's right.
Fair, okay. So I'm going to move to approve the purchase of one Xerox Versalink C7125 external finisher, delivered and installed on the copier, treasurer's office. Uh, for the sum of $1,200 to be paid from ARPA funds requested.
Second motion?
Others in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
While we're talking about trade. Go ahead, Paul.
Is that what you want me to?
Yes, please. It's not on the agenda, but it's just a housekeeping.
Um, so I did give you an updated ARPA report this morning, and there is money that's been accounted for broad, for future broadband projects. And if you want that to be allocated in other ways, then you would need to basically free up that $1,359,000 that's that has not been allocated for broadband projects.
We're still holding another $200,000 aside for project, right?
Yes.
Okay.
County of Orland has
I'd like to suggest that we free up at 1.359 and put that towards the total available funds.
I, I, I agree, I think it should be, it should be, there's no
It's sitting here, it's sitting in that line, because I haven't been told to do otherwise.
Yeah, so I think it should appear on agenda, we should do it next meeting, just to be clear, clean.
Okay.
That's my opinion. I mean, it's not going to make any difference to me, it should appear on agenda, we should
Yeah, if that's the motion you want.
That sound like a plan with that? Okay.
Yep, okay. All right.
Okay, co, uh, next item.
For the guidance updates.
Consistent with what? And where is this?
Should be the very first item.
Yeah.
So I gave you in the packet page that I sent out a couple weeks ago, gave you a copy of what I found online, says states practice of try to incorporate as much as possible to make it clear that employees really need to try and go out of their way to be safe, stay home and all that. Had consulted with the attorneys about just clarification on rights and responsibilities, and they can do additional duty assignments as indicated, so the department head could send a member home and say work from home. Do this, and it would still be a job assignment, as you've read in the information that the attorney sent. So there is a little bit of flexibility there as well. Heard back from workers' comp, workers' comp said if there is an actual claim, an employee files, file the claim, they investigate. Um, but on face value, it's a airborne, they much similar to flu and other illnesses, and likely, a claim would be denied unless it could be explicitly proven that the exposure was a result of the working environment. So, again, non-disturbed employees, that's referenced in here, if employee feels like they got it here, they file the claim, or contact their supervisor department head to fill out the paperwork, or contact HR to fill out the paperwork, claims filed, and then that is taken care of between workers' comp and the employee. So what you have in front of you basically is to try to clean up a little bit and add to it, to try to make it clear to everybody. A COVID-19 employee safety guidelines for Hancock County talks about the core prevention strategies, which again is referenced in the CDC. Encouraging people to get vaccinated, not mandating anything that I'm aware of, you haven't before. Different tiers and the path policy, which we will talk about in a minute, uh, depending on if you had been vaccinated or not, there were certain daily requirements in terms of how long you needed to be isolated or kept out of work. But that has also been removed, because that was back in the earlier phase of it. So, vaccine, urging vaccines, good hygiene, less small steps, clean air. And then if you're sick, basically old, stay home and wait on it's bottom line, if you feel sick, stay home. Talks about symptoms, contacting, recommending to contact healthcare provider, discuss options, seek medical attention, obviously, if they really are sick and, and feel that they need that. And then the discussion, and I'm not getting into a debate about whether masks work or don't work, okay? Just not doing it today. But the reality is that's still a recommendation that's put up by the CDC, so if the employee does come back, there is a five-day period that's referenced, that, that's critical. So the recommendation would be that if the employee comes back after they meet this other thresholds that are in there, or the CDC guidelines, that, uh, you know, they would mask up and try to stay away from people, and again, good hygiene and all those things to try to not infect somebody else. And then to return to work, I, I don't see any way around this, but if you guys tell me to do something different, I'll do different now. You had the legal opinion about the authority of the district attorney to do what he needs to do to keep that building over there safe, so, and I'll convey all that, assuming you know, wherever we end up today, I'll make sure that he's aware of all the discussion points that have been brought up related to that issue, but
Michael, excuse me, with your guys as DA, what's on, aside from the COVID thing? Did, did they address to your satisfaction who the department head is, DA's office?
I mean, it's, it's basically the department head is the DA. That's always been the case, it's always, they treated the case and, and per the legal opinion that was given, they made it clear that he has responsibility and, and authority to be able to run the operations of the DA's office.
Does Bob agree with that now? Well, it's important, because, for example, termination can only be done by the department head with the approval of commissioners, but we have a couple issues here. One of those is DA who wonders if, because he's a state employee, if he's the department head. The other one is probate. Is the elected registrar the department head, or is the judge the department head? That's never been resolved. I'm just going to, we have an employee in in probate that needs to be discharged, technically and legally has authority.
Judge probably in most cases had very little interaction, and, and the department has always been treated as the elected official, just like the sheriffs, the elected official of the sheriff's department. Just like Deeds is the elected official of the registry, in Deeds employees, so
Which a registrar of probate is contravened the DA's office, I mean, the minstrel system wouldn't be the department head in the DA's office.
No.
No.
No. Shouldn't be, I mean, again, I have a legal opinion in front of you, but if you want me to modify the personnel policy in a way that spells out who the department heads, I mean, look at that.
When you say, you look at, I'm looking at several different
So there would have been further into, you have the two pages of the actual Hancock County Personnel Policy, said discipline, termination, so that's what's in the existing personnel policy right now. Again, that's not applicable to the other agreements, the CBAs and, and anything else that's there, but that's, that's from the personnel policy itself. So, other of the other concerns and issues is what I'm referencing.
And that's written, is that coming from you when you say, I, is that?
Yes, I, I'm the author of that. Now where the, by reference, the attorney or the other statements, that's And if you tell me differently, then that, that's what I need to incorporate into some type of policy to dispute that, but
You heard that the DA is not the
That, that the DA would not be I'd like to see that. The DA doesn't have the authority, which I, I don't believe there's any justification, I mean, yes, he's not a county employee, but it is the DA's office.
I'd like to see that policy, if he understands.
And that he is?
Yes.
Well, as, as it's written, it's assumed that he is. Right?
So, you know, the old saying was
Well
If, if not, then who is, I guess, is the question, it's the same question, I send it to the D, to, who, who's performing all those supervisory functions right now? It's not me.
If, if we assume it, let's, let's put it in right.
And I, and I have no problem as long as
Somebody wants to challenge it some way?
But if you do do that, the DA, you want to do like the other decisions you mentioned.
Well, it
I, and I'm not arguing either way, I just want to know.
Yes, I would like to see that spelled out, so that it's clear, and if somebody wants to challenge it, somebody in the room, good. Get a court decision on it, tell them.
In other words, you just want to put right in what the comment, what
Basically, what, who the department, what does it, yeah.
Is there, I don't see any harm in that.
I, no.
I don't, I'm not sure it's needed, but I, I've not seen
You know, eventually, we're going to come back to the personnel policy, redo it all anyway, so maybe we'll be able to make that even cleaner and more cohesive, but for the interim, the assumption would be that we're just plugging in either another paragraph or another spot within personnel policy, and clarify, clarify who the department heads are for each department.
All right. Just a minute, why does the attorney say that the DA can direct employees to take the day off with pay, even if they don't get benefit on it?
It's a, because he's basically saying that's, that's an assignment, so the DA has the ability to assign somebody? Yeah, to assign them to work from home, out of the office, do whatever. And that is that, that's his opinion? I mean, in terms of us and benefits? I, I mean, if, if somebody's, if they reported they were out sick, then we're going to look at it as personnel payable, or it's okay, well, we're using sick time, so. If, if they're just out of the office and he's directing them to go home?
If he's directing them to home because they're sick, he doesn't want to infect everybody else in the department, it's not an assignment. Is this going to be my course is dry?
Well, but it still doesn't
That just muddies up the water even more. Employee can't come to work sick. Exhibits severe symptoms. And the department head said, no, you go home, and don't come back until you're feeling better, and so, I don't want to infecting the whole department. He didn't assign them. He didn't give them assignment. He, he gave them, basically, he said disciplinary action. You know, you're, this misconduct, if you come to work so sick, you're affecting the department. And it's an endless misconduct. Why the hell would we send somebody home with pay misconduct?
The employee's going to argue that they were directed to go home, so they have no choice.
Absolutely, because they misconduct, he was directed to go.
Well, I mean, if they're accused, then yeah, that's another issue, and again, that gets back to who
Coming from a second, it's, it's a form Coming from sick, it is, is a form of misconduct.
So. And right now, I don't have anything that says otherwise, that we give anything or don't give anything. I mean, right now, as far as I know, if somebody's not here, they're being charged sick time. But if the department head or an individual doesn't put it down on the card because they're assuming their department head told them not to come to work, and their department head was okay with it, and they sign off on their time card, then we're not going to know that it was a sick day or not sick day.
Policies should be given guidelines, so the department head and the employees. I think the policy should clearly state that if you are sick, severely sick, don't come to work and infect the rest of the office. And if you do, it's a form of misconduct, and the department is going to send you home. If you don't have any sick time or benefit time when it works, it's without pay. That's what the policy should be. I mean, that's, how could you not do that?
And you're saying this.
I don't see the policy, I'm looking at the comments from the attorney.
And I can put that in there if that's what you're going to want. That obviously has to be a policy decision directed by the majority of you. So I mean, if that's what you want, then that's what I convey back to all the department heads, and that's what I incorporate into this policy. And then if it's challenged by an employee, if they are disciplined, it's like anything else, I guess we have that battle, when that battle comes up. Now, of course, CBA agreements, those could potentially be grieved and everything else, and then I guess the question would be, how does that follow with any agreements if it's an employee that's, you know, come on the union?
I mean, if we don't put that in, what you're saying to your employees is, you're out of sick time, and you're sick. All you're gonna do is come to work and get the department head to send you home, now you got paid.
Well, I mean.
Now, if you stay home without paying.
You don't even have to come to work. You could just call up your department head and say, I don't feel well, and here's my symptoms, and I think I might have this.
Well, he's gonna, he's gonna.
Why do you have, you basically, or she even have to say, yeah, okay, please stay home. Or do you have your laptop, can you work on this? Do you have this?
That's a, that's a side of that. I mean, what's the sense of having the limit for benefit time if you just work and give everybody?
Yeah, I, I understand where you're going. Your take is that unless we put that in the policy, that's by adopting this policy that we're.
Well, you'd have to make it even clearer in probably this policy, but this is only COVID policy. So I mean, that gets back to, do you put that in your overall personnel policy? And as a result of that, obviously incorporate it into. I mean, that's why something like that isn't in here right now, because that really is a far stretch beyond what I feel I have authority to recommend to you. That really is truly a hundred percent policy issue. And if that's how you want to approach it, I mean, I'll try to incorporate language and then like any policy, it is what it is until it's challenged, and if it's wrong, then the county lives or dies by whatever it adds to policy.
So if somebody comes to work, they exhibit all the symptoms of COVID, but they haven't been tested. But they exhibit serious symptoms. This policy doesn't affect what the department head does for them unless they have been diagnosed with COVID. Is that correct?
It basically indicates an employee, they should stay home, and it does at least give something the department head can reference and say, look, you're exhibiting these symptoms here, you need to go. Whether you're positive or not, you just need to go home. Because even if it is COVID or isn't COVID, it's still not good practice.
No, but you said this is the COVID policy that only affects COVID.
Well, in, in terms of, it talks about COVID, I mean, the personnel policy, if you want to make this universal and hat of teeth, then you need to incorporate, in my opinion, you need to incorporate that in with your sick leave policy, right, in the personnel policy. But then that makes it universal, so it's not just, because it's not just COVID anymore, because this is just discussing COVID. I mean, that could be the flu, it could be anything.
Absent, we're the, you know, global overview of policies and whatnot, can we amend the sick time policies to make it clear?
Yeah. I, I mean, I'm assuming that's why, if you wanted to go that route, that's what you would be asking to be done, so you would have to update the personnel policy to include some language and make it very clear that people are stay home, and if they refuse to stay home, and they're so directed and they refuse to follow it, then it references back to one of the items, which is certainly one of the items for consideration of a terminable event. But of course, there's progressive discipline and all the other stuff that goes with that too, so. But at least there would be very clear intent on your part that department heads can't send them home, and, and then that's the assumption is just that they're not going to use time, but they get basically paid pay off. Is what you're.
What I'm saying is, is that if they come and show severe signs, symptoms of illness, that the department head has the ability to order them to go home, and they can't work from home, then they can, if they will be compensated, they have to draw for benefits, they don't have any benefits, it's without pay.
Makes sense.
It also should not assume that they can work from home, because if they are sick.
And we don't even do any work?
Right.
Yeah. Sounds like we're looking for a wider policy.
You sustain, you, you can come back to us with language, right?
Yes, I hope so, but yes, I, I mean, I know what it is to. So. I can craft something, and then we can have the next discussion. I get that. But whatever I craft into that, I think makes sense to try to get it emphasized in, in both of these policies. Well, really, this first one isn't a policy, this is more a flyer you hand out to personnel, saying, hey, you should be doing all these things, these are the best practices, go check these websites out, or whatever, this is what you should do. The other policy, which I mean, I, I don't know if was ever adopted or not, but was the the COVID guidelines, Hancock County COVID guidelines, which had the purpose, goals, definitions, all that. I assume it was, but I haven't been able to find it, it's not in the company anymore yet. I don't know if it was officially adopted or not.
Commissioners, essentially, I can't believe that we're discussing common sense. However, I'm here to represent the district attorney's office, obviously. And I'm not sure if, I have seen some correspondence that has been brought between the district attorney and Michael about an issue, obviously, that occurred in our department. Obviously, I have county employees, I have state employees that are working under two different guidelines. My state employees, their guidelines that come down through HR for them says work will require that you stay home if you're sick. Further, if you feel sick with any symptoms consistent with COVID-19, or have been in close contact with someone with COVID-19, then also immediately test. Period. That is black and white with the state guidelines. So. You know, the district attorney, Mr. Granger, has been very clear that if you're sick, don't come to work because you cannot afford for that department. And as you know, that has happened, and we lost a good majority of employees, and with court going on, we can't afford it, so.
You agree with the suggestion they're making on what the policy should say in DA's responsibilities, you think?
Yes, yep. I'm a little gray in the area of, you know, benefit time, like Monica stated, you know, don't necessarily assume that they can work from home. They may not have a laptop, or in some cases, maybe they live in an area that doesn't even have internet, so.
Or they're too sick to work.
Exactly. So I think that's a gray area for me right now, trying to understand what policy you're going to put into place, whether or not if you don't have benefit time, then you just don't get paid for it. But the big scope is don't come to work sick, and if you do come to work sick, then there are going to be some issues with the disciplinary, you know, and I kind of want to approach that because, you know, half the department is county employees, the other half is the department's state employees. So, I mean, I can only address the county employees on disciplinary actions that you're discussing, putting into place with policy. So I would like this just taken care of sooner than later, because obviously, here we are in August, we've already had a COVID outbreak in the department, and we're going into sick time for the year, you know, when this illnesses start really coming out.
So if we made the ability of DA's office to tell employees to stay home with exhibits and their symptoms, the issue of whether or not they can work at home is something that the, that the department head can work out with the employees.
I agree.
You know, I don't think we, I think that really gets into weeds.
And, and I think this policy allows that to happen.
Yeah.
Right, and it's. That's why I think we should take action on this policy for exactly what.
Yes.
So I think that's a manning condition, whether or not they're working from home and they're compensated. But the issue of if you're too sick to work from home, or you have, you don't have the ability, you don't have any benefit time, it's, it's your answer about that.
I agree.
Yeah, I think we're all agreeing. We're, so, Michael, it sounds like we need to take action on this policy, and then separately, we need to take, we need to update the policy, right?
Well, I mean, I guess.
I mean, the personnel policy, not COVID.
To me, the, the only other thing that, from, from what I've seen, again, this, this was taken straight from the state's website. So if there's an additional thing that's going out there from the state that, you know.
This came from their HR.
Send it over to me so I can look at it, you know, that would help. But this is what I found online, according to state, saying it's state's employees, March 2024.
But what's one of these documents, is the guidelines?
So.
Is it the one that says COVID employee safety guidelines?
So one would, this is kind of more of, this is what you should be doing, kind of informational, all that. That's the COVID safety guidelines in 2024. Then you have the the others. One, which is basically a modification of the actual policy that presumably you proved back from the first, the actual COVID guidelines. Listed as 2024, has purposes and goals, and talks about what is COVID in workplace and all that. Now, the, the only difference that I'm hearing is a five-day reference. But it sounds like the state, and Michelle, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like the state just said, you stay home five days and whatever.
I don't have a, I don't have it any more than just basically it says, if you have any symptoms, test immediately. I don't have any follow-up information other than, you know, how long you have to stay home, mask or unmask, vax, et cetera, et cetera.
And the trouble with putting the testing threshold in there too, is you may not test positive, depending on the timing of where you're at, and some people don't test positive, but they have it too, so. The arguments all go the same way, but I will say, even the insurance company, the workers' comp, Lee, in her letter, had made reference to the fact that standard CDC protocol is five days from work or 24 hours fever-free without the use of fever-reducing medications. And that is kind of what we've been going on and what's been in there. But it's my understanding, at least it was, that the DA said that that didn't work and wasn't consistent with the state either, so I mean, if I'm going to enforce the thing, I just need to know what I'm enforcing, and am I enforcing state policy, or am I enforcing and putting out there that are consistent with CDC recommendation?
We got the state and CDC, I think we developed a policy.
Well, that's what you did.
And I think it's clear, I mean, obviously, if you want me to put that on a language, that would further clarify. There's no question that a person, again, which I hear even in the shell, it's not a common sense, but I, I don't see that employees get to decide which instructions that they adhere to and don't adhere to. I mean, if it's an issue, they, they follow the change command and go up and make complaints. Or if it's a grievance, and they make a grievance decision, they go that way. But, yeah, I mean, obviously, if it's clear that they have the responsibility, authority to keep work environment safe, then that would be, they would send somebody home.
Have you amended the COVID guidance?
Yes, so what you'll see in that is just where it's crossed out, is where I took stuff out, which was primarily just reference to if you had vaccinations and you stayed, you, 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 five days, or if you didn't, then you have ten days. So this is basically, except for the fact that now we've added the other language. So I mean, I think if you're going to put that into the personnel policy, then you probably ought to include it, just reference here as well. Whatever we have.
Take that back then and bring this back to us again.
I think, I mean, I think it's, the bottom line is, and I can quite clearly just send out an email to all department heads saying that during our discussion today, commissioners asked me to clarify that if, to make sure that you're telling employees, if employees come into work that look like or sound like, feel like they're sick, you need to send them home. Bottom line.
Need to admit, they have the authority to do.
To me, they have the authority to do that, I believe so.
Well, they, I guess they need to be told.
I mean, they basically have, but.
The DA should physically remove that sick employee from the office.
The DA's concern, I think, was obviously the fact that he's not employed by Hancock County, and I think that created confusion, a gray area for him. Based on email traffic that him and I had going back before. From my standpoint, it doesn't, because it's the DA's office, I mean, he's, he's had, he always will have. But to clarify it, so there's no future misunderstanding, and then when the next DA comes along, or the next county administrator, it's, it's in policy, so if it's going to change, the only way it's going to change is if it goes back before the commission's in place at the time, so.
Yes, I, I mean, I think it's just it's always been that the DA's the department head, right?
I don't know if you remember.
Well, I mean, it's on the ITD department head list, and I send all the notes to the department heads that go out to the office, but I also send copies to their deputies too, so.
The technical aspects is, is, is statute, which requires actually whether the department head for terminations, as we're saying. DA under COVID, he always acted as if he was the department head, it's never an issue. I don't know what's happened since he's left. I think it's, it shouldn't have changed it. I think we should recognize him as the department head, he should, he should be, he should treat himself as the department head until it's overturned by a higher authority.
So. And to get out of this and move on, I don't see a problem with adopting a policy that's in front of us. It seems like the next step would be to amend the the personnel policy if needed. I'm not convinced that it's needed yet, but I think we need to take action. Bill, do you agree that we need to take action on this?
Because I, I think we need, the issue came up, and what's that in this whole thing is, like, a sick employee, I told him to go home, and she won't go. That's the issue. This policy does not address that. And Michael understands now that's a concern of ours, and he's willing to go back, incorporate that into this policy, and bring it back to us as a finished document. I think we should take that time to do it. Michael?
And, and I think in the interim, the commissioners are supportive of that, if that's your position as a collective board, then I don't believe any department head is going to have an issue with, with, in the interim, trying to address the concern about having sick people coming in. Because it'll be quite clear that they know, yes, we're working on the policy, and quite frankly, you, you're going home now, and if there's an issue, it comes back to you anyway, or you have your hearing, you have just cause, if there was a terminable case, you have to go through all that with you anyway. So.
Okay, so that's sound, everybody's agreeable that this should be tabled to.
But if we do, I'd like to get it back on the next meeting.
Please.
It's good. And it sounds like that would help DA's office, I hope. The other department.
I think it's a done deal, you bring it back, what if I, you know?
Yeah, because we. Is, is that the consensus among all three of you then?
Yeah, so do you want action to table this on the next meeting, or are we okay the way it is?
How, however you feel.
I'm going to move the table of this item to the next meeting.
Second motion.
Hi.
What would you say, sir?
I just have a quick question. When you're putting this policy in place, are you combining both the CDC and I'll provide you with the state HR book?
I mean, that's why I'd like to see what else they have, because I only went off of what I could find off the state website.
Not a problem.
But there may be some incongruencies, so if the state is saying like five days, well, I, I've got no real today world basis, I do based on COVID two years ago, but for me to say, yeah, we could actually make an employee have to use five days if they are feeling, you know, in the meat of criteria, as in the CDC recommendation, so. And I own my position beyond that, but again, at the end of the day, he, if we add the other language, he could do what he was appropriate within his realm of authority, that the commissioners are clarifying he has.
It sounds like the DA is going to have to work on the two policies, depending on what group he's dealing with. And we do that every day here, because we have CBAs that tell you one thing, we have personnel policies, non-union personnel policies, something different, so.
At the end of the day, I don't think, unless there's some big surprises in what she has, I don't think there's going to be a lot of disparity, the question just might be.
At the end of the day, I don't think, unless there's some big surprises in mind, she has, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of disparity, the question just might be, return, return to work policy, like, when, when you can make that determination to come back to work.
If he's got a problem with returning, it's obvious that the sick won't, won't hold him, he'll take it up with the AG, he'll take it up with the.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Next time. Look at that box that just showed up.
Was it been?
I call the full shopping, I ran around too much.
Oh, good deal.
Okay, so, do we want to deal with that now, or do you wanna go?
If we deal with it, you know, he's, he's not gonna have time left today, so it's no different when we do it.
I don't think, judging by the size, size of those boxes, I think you'd need a month to do it.
Well, would we open them and just not take? Yeah, let's like secretly think about it.
I would think that would be the most appropriate, I mean, in the specs, if, if references that basically, that you would, uh, you would open them, uh, and basically indicate what's contained within them, and then there would be a review process, so. Uh, but for the record, we're only going to not take, no action or anything, and that's why I didn't include that second. We will, we will publicly not take the cost of that. Yeah, that's whatever.
Yeah, sure. There you go.
Yes, I'm good.
I figured that might work.
Yeah.
It's the mild-mannered, one-day employee.
Yeah, this is why it costs us three hundred million dollars.
So, this, uh, the first one is from social profit connection corrections.
We need a little timer that says that purple red light comes on, so move your mouse, uh, see your computers just on time now.
You gotta have that happen, and then you gotta take your keys out, and you gotta put your hand up.
Oh. Yeah. How are you gonna be able to give a sign on the line? Last page.
Yeah. Yeah, we spent the last few days. Eighty-five sixty-seven. Back to the last, it's the cost of the fourth. I don't see a page in the.
There's a page in.
Yep. Is that eight? You don't, you don't have pages. It's across. It's, uh, towards the end, section seven. I should.
All right, so the estimated total basis for one year is two million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. From social purpose corrections.
Where are you seeing that?
That is the end of section seven.
Last, last, so that's the correct. Section.
Page.
Is that page? It was page number seven.
Oh, okay, yeah. And my, my guess is that you should be able to.
Yes, I'll grab it when we get all done.
All right, the next one is from correctional psychiatric services.
Put on this side, so we look at. Kind of right?
Yep.
We'll have to retain one, one copy, obviously, to the clerk's office, but.
I, I'd put them all in there.
Depending on how many, yeah, but what I'm saying basically, don't send Tim out the door with all of them.
Oh, that's why I'm putting them there.
Okay.
Monica.
Services. Boy, this is.
Been a process already for us.
All right, so this one's listed as, uh, the annual, let's see, annual program costs of five hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars.
What company was that?
Correctional psychiatric services.
Well, what we don't know is if that encompasses all of things that. That's, we don't know where shit happens.
Basically, what we'll have to do is Tim and Frank, it's probably myself, but maybe Monica, who, from the commentary standpoint. Basically, we'll have to have a committee of us sit down and go, and we'll probably go over individually, but go through, look through, answer any questions, and we also can obviously call on Peter and Marquesi, if there's questions as well, because he, you know, he anticipated that being part of this process as well, to guide the commission and the employees through its review once it happens.
Well, that's what, when he was here, that's what we talked about, yeah.
So, and certainly, and ultimately, we'll probably stand the, send it down. As well, although we do actually, they're supposed to have, some of these are supposed to have a drive in them as well, so we have.
Well, that's probably.
John, the next one's from Gene Willie. Why, I'm sorry.
This just talks about all the reimbursements, it doesn't give us a total, right?
I believe we'll find that one just addressing the mental health of the key just bidding on the mental health section of it, not, not the whole package of the other two have.
Well, and, and I think that's what that one that we just did was, the five hundred?
They understand, they're in other facilities.
Doing the whole thing?
Yep.
Okay. So this is.
If that Sarah's willing, I believe that's gonna be just for the mental health side of things.
Yeah, and I, I don't see a total here.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, just.
Talks about the rates, my guess is similar to the.
Contract, probably, an hourly rate.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you. You'll still get it.
Jim, is this sort of what you expected? You know, after talking to the.
Yep, and this is, these are the, all for, all these visited facility, they were, they came into the building, talked to the medical side, mental health side, they talked, well, they're, they've all had their, been physically inside the facility, sorry, I need.
All right, the next one's from, uh, alternative corrections healthcare.
Is that considered an effort to get, like, help from the, I mean, this is all coming from state mandates, so. So they're not facing the music on any of this?
There is an effort right now, dealing with the, uh, portion of the mandated section of this dealing, but it's still not.
Hold on.
I mean, realistically provide everything you need to provide. It's not really even close, but.
Well, no, our budget shows that.
But basically, I mean, last session, and they're gearing up already to go down next session again, the different organizations to present and advocate for the legislature, again, they need to do more, they need to offer the counties and other entities that provide these facilities, it's either that, or they need to reduce their standards, one or the other, but. But right now, there's no county that's saying, that I'm aware of, that's saying, oh, yeah, no, we got plenty of money, thanks.
Well, I wonder at what, at what point counties say, sorry, state, we're out of this business. I mean, that's what's gonna have to happen eventually.
I know that just from, and there was probably only eight or nine of us county administrators from the state, but I know from a conversation we had at one of my committee meetings, the basic, at least two, our, I said, we can't comply with this law, and we can't comply with LD one, or, or the funding jail cap, so you tell us which one, because if we don't comply with the health requirements, and something happens, we're gonna get sued, and we're on the hook anyway. If we don't comply with the LD one funding cap or anything else, you know, pick your voice, but right now, we can't do both, because we can't, it costs too much. And that's what we're, I mean, if we get out of this, less than a million dollars, I think we were figuring, oh, that's probably a pretty good bid, right?
All right, so this last one from alternative corrections, and it has two different lines to it that I read, says the compensation for, uh, the RFP request staffing plan would be roughly one million, three hundred, uh, three hundred, five hundred, I'm sorry. One million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Then it says the compensation for suggested staffing plan based on population would be six hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars, so.
So you think that's an addition to the one?
No, what it is, we put the RFP as a Peter asking for the best of the best. And I think that's just, they, they all question that, they're the process, as a figure of Peter, that a lot of them, these proposals are gonna be the reason for the deviation from the RFP, what we need, because there are the end county facilities, knowing what based on size, what we need compared to what they, um, what we asked for. We asked for twenty-four hours of medical, twenty-four hours of psychiatric, and they said, that's, that's why you're one point three, but if we ask for that, that's what, I'm guessing that's what the bid would be, but all the deviations between the trail, that's right. Their proposal is six point, six hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Yeah, but, cut it.
So why couldn't we take the six hundred and forty-seven thousand?
We, that's what, we'll have to, we'll have to make sure the deviations meet our needs, that she wants to deviate from the contract. But, you know, we have one for.
So that really is part of your new process, is what, what's at, what at the most minimum level, and do we have to comply? And what would that look like, and based upon the bids that provided, there is some flexibility built into the order, if I recall correctly, about what you ultimately end up deciding would be the final award or what.
So, so the process is, you, you folks are gonna sit down with a consultant, because you can't do this by yourself, like. Right, so then.
And, and really, we need to back recommendations, not looking at on that side, the numbers, you can decide what we're gonna pay, but, I mean, the lowest bidder might not be the ideal bidder, based on the deviations they've offered, so.
Well, just in my cursory look, the lowest bidder might not be the lowest bidder.
Right.
And the highest bidder might not be the highest bidder, so.
I think that the last one was pretty well clarified, that, again, she, I would say she projected it to be one point three million, if we went full-blown RFP as stated, but what she's gonna prove with her deviations is six forty-seven. That's what I'm guessing, that's what that all comes.
And reading that two million dollar one, it looked like there were, I mean, that's a thing.
Yep.
But it looked like there were something similar there.
It probably is, yeah, I mean, though, obviously, without looking at it, none of us know for sure, though.
Two of the three have actual county main county jail experience, and one does not have county experience, so. Okay, with those references and everything on top of that one, so, we find the process also.
All right. I can tell you, though, that years ago, the issue of, when the county jail, Justice Spencer came up and was resolved by the AG's office, basically, it said, time of access, and they go beyond jail, they'll run it, and they'll send the county the bill for running. They rejected that bill, but anyway, thirty-three to forty percent higher than what you're paying now, so.
So how can they, oh, because we're statutorily obligated to provide those services, so they're gonna come in, run it for us, and charge us for it.
AOC's gonna continue to run your jail level, and that's a billion, and the AG's office will bring suit if you don't pay the bill.
I believe it was when Fisher Clark, the sheriff, he also run a proposal about making this a, so he got hold of the city, shipped everybody out, that's, and we should give all the million dollars more, actually housing in that building.
Because we'd have to pay.
Pay them, pay them, uh, fee to housing.
They still have their.
And there's only one facility that really can do that.
And that was the driving force between laws and jails, when they, when they either built it in jail, expanded, doing that, because the cost of boarding was more expensive than the cost of rebuilding.
But yet, they, they require us to house, house all their pre-sentencing folks, driving up our costs, lowering their costs.
Off probation violations, everybody that's, yeah, all the state.
When does it end, I mean?
It, it, it won't. Don't scratch it, we're just gonna, it just, I'm gonna hate to say it, that's what it is, but that's right, it's a, it's not easy, and I would even trouble to keep people.
It's, it's a, it's a legal form of bullying, is what it is, because the county's.
Worse than that.
The counties don't have the ability to say no, or compete, or defeat, or defend themselves, and the state knows that, the legislature knows that, so. You know, we're gonna decriminalize all these offenses, and give you, and build facilities that they never built, so they end up back in the county jail, or, you know, because trumped up, charged, because, you know, intoxication is no longer a violation, but drunk people end up in jail, because there's no place to take them. You know, mental health is, mental health is the biggest one, I mean, they close down, ban their mental health and all that, custom mental health, and whatnot, we don't treat them, you know, and they never go to treatment facilities, they don't take care of them, you know.
Because Chef, that the conversation ends Friday, voted, vote the problem we're running into here, that we're terrifying, or housing, or, like every other county, the mental health.
If we're on the receiving end of the liability of this, because if you simply don't take them, produce them improperly, and something terrible happens, we're liable.
Absolutely.
I just like to doesn't get sued. All right.
Back to your month or something.
You can do that in a month, that's like feet. You can do that in a month, that's like, yeah.
I wanna take a break now, or?
Okay, you gotta get by Monica, that's.
You won't let me.
Take a break, fifteen minutes? All right, we're back in session, and we're back to Commissioner's, uh, discussion of courtroom renovation plans.
Well, I have to have this on the agenda, because if you recall here, months ago, Sheriff's Department and Deeds came to us in one twenty-seven. Renovations started at particular areas for different reasons, and I thought, given the fact, of course, we're gonna be leaving next two, three, four years, whatever, maybe, I don't. But anyways, that we should, uh, we should really look at what we're doing so that we don't have to destroy what we renovated today, three years down the road. A couple issues that I'd like to bring up here with is that Tim, Regisense's jail's been in contact with federal government, and they're always looking for space for board inmates, and they'd like to keep it close to either the Bangor Federal Court or the Fulton Federal Court. So Hancock County has always been on their race for beds, to the point where they've offered Tim the ability to, to renovate and expand his jail, federal government would pay for it, and then they would pay them for the additional beds if they put federal inmates in those beds. Now, Tim's got a couple plans, one of them is to go that way on the jail, move into the administration section, the administration fatter up. The other one, Lois, is to come off the end of this end, come down through, pick up District Court, which is behind us. There's an elevation issue there, but I don't think they, I think they can be overcome, in, if they can be. And so we ended up taking this room and the corridor and District Court behind us as part of the expansion, uh, which means we, we'd end up losing a meeting room, which we'd have to decide where we're gonna go. Except another issue has come up, that over the years, because Deeds has been digitalizing their records, they no longer have the, the need for all that space they have down there for high-bound books. And they have the ability to reduce that area, and I always have thought, first of all, this is a tough meeting room. And I asked you this morning to take note of how many people were here and how full the room was. There was only fifteen spectators in the room, and I think there were two chairs left over. So we had seventeen, ability to, to seat seventeen people, and we were maxed out, and with registered deeds willing to move out of that area, I would personally like to see if there was some way for us to get that meeting area back down to where our government offices are. Treasurer, IT, HR, Administrator's Office, his staff, and so on. And so I, I'd been talking to the department heads down there about what their needs were, and what would, what they could live with. And as a result, I've come up with, uh, a suggestion, that's all it is, a suggestion on how we can reallocate space down on first, on the ground floor, on the, I guess it's called first floor, the main floor, and incorporate all the, all the space in there, and part of that would be the two that, IT, which is on that floor, would like to have more space, and they'd like to, Chuck would like to have space enough so he could have his own office, and Ben can have his own office, and then a common area. And he's looked at EMA, where they are now, and said that would be ideal space for them, it's close to the circuitry, and it has the amount of space, and, and figured it in, in the way he'd like to see that. And if we can do something with EMA through our emergency operations center, and they left the building, that would, that would move IT out of that ground floor, out of the main floor of our office. And so this suggestion that I'm giving you on the map there, whatnot, would be what I would like you to consider we do. And as you can see, the area now that's registered deeds is carved up into new Commissioner's meeting room, and there would be a conference room in front of that, and Brittany's workspace would be in the opposite corner of that, that's. And then directly behind that would be Michael, and an opportunity for him to continue to keep the meeting room and the conference space, which he has had in his office, because it's large enough, even though there were times when it wasn't really big enough for him, but, uh, it really gives a better conference space for his. Monica has been saying for a while that she'd like to have her own office, and she and Mary would separate and have separate offices, which gives her, HR would be located in an area now where you could go to HR to have a conversation with HR without having to go through somebody else's office. In the past, if you went to HR to visit the HR director, half the main floor knew you were going in there. You had to go through their offices just to get there, and now you can go in and see HR without everybody knowing, and knowing you're in the place. Deeds has looked at the remaining area standing for Michael's office right through, and said that's sufficient for their needs. And I wouldn't be doing anything with probate, they have so many elements to that, and they're well figured, so there's no reason to change probate. As you look at Commissioner's meeting space, I've also given you a comparison of the present meeting spaces it is now, and right below that is what I proposed in registered deeds, and as you can see, in the present meeting space, even though it talks about having four hundred eighty-six square feet of seating area, some of that is taken up by Monica and Brittany over here, and Michael over here, and the, the screen, and so on. So, I mean, even though it's almost five hundred feet, just, uh, square feet, I mean, you can put fifteen, eighteen chairs in here comfortably. If you look at the reconfiguration downstairs in the meeting, it's larger, and its actual meeting space, I wouldn't be surprised, it'd actually twice as far as seating, would be twice as much. And I, I would say we could put, if we can get fifteen, eighteen in here, I wouldn't be surprised, we could get configured square like it is, we could get probably forty chairs in there if we wanted to. Think about how many times we've had get-togethers in here for whatever reason, and people lined up and standing in the back of the room. And so anyways, um, this, for me, addresses some of the concerns, uh, that I would like to see in improving our meeting space to not finding ourselves someday without a meeting space, because we wanna give it to the jail, and, and I've also taken the time to sit down and look at the available court space, and I think that, in fact, I'm fairly certain, in my opinion, that would meet the expansion needs of the Sheriff's Department. And, uh, so, anyways, this is basically, again, prompting a discussion about, uh, what would we to do, and the thing about renovating deeds right now is that that is something we can do now. We don't have to wait for the courts to leave. The, we can, the, the books that, that Julie has in there now have already been digitized. She's taking, uh, she's going through them again, she has staff double-checked to make sure they're accurate. But she's getting ready to take those out, leaving that space available. And so if you look at the suggestion I'm making, we could actually do this on the main floor anytime we wanted to. And if we do it before December thirty-first, all these renovations could be paid for without.
Well, in other words, contracted by that, I wouldn't have to be complete, yeah.
Right, that's what I mean, yep, yep. But I think it's a good time to, to paint out all the office space, to, uh, there are some, uh, there were some places down there that really need to be touched up with, uh, you know, additional craftsmanship and so on. And it's a good opportunity to spruce up that space, and at the same time, redesign this for future use, so.
So you're saying, I guess I haven't walked this enough, like, this, this page could be done now?
Right.
What about I, so I know you have IT here.
You guys agree with me?
Pardon? Uh, IT, it's not the IT part, so like, IT's.
They would go down to EMA.
I will not say no to receiving an office.
But I mean, as people work in, in those departments, you feel this could be pulled up?
It's mostly deeds, because the biggest renovation would be to that department.
Well, and actually, it would be the biggest renovation, but they, they're the ones, the space wouldn't have to be occupied, because they, they would have time to move, I mean, the courts leave, right, they would have all that time.
Who, who you talking now?
Deeds, deeds is the, the rest of this can be done, except, not except, but deeds could be done. But why vacate that space till I need to?
You keep going, what space?
Deeds.
Because it accommodates our ability to do the renovation now and pay for it without fund, we're not gonna buy up funds three years down the road when courts leave.
No, I know, but the renovation could be done, it just wouldn't need to be occupied.
Wouldn't be occupied, and still need deeds in there?
In other words, deeds, the work could be done, deeds wouldn't have to move into it.
Just leave deeds where it is?
Yeah.
In, in that new space?
Yeah. If, if.
So, my question is, so, IT's offices that are up here now, they're gonna, is there space down there for them to go?
IT, if we were to occupy the new space downstairs, IT said they would take this space temporarily until, uh, GMA became available. Even this is better than once they got as far as expanding, because they don't have, whoever went to IT, you can see how cramped they are. And, uh, this isn't ideal, but most of what they have can be relocated given the water.
Where's IT now?
Paul, Paul, you should take a walk.
Well, I ha, I have, but I'm not.
So if you go into where Brittany is, and go into HR, keep going.
So if you look on the map, where it is, that's HR.
Yeah.
That's where IT is right now.
HR is where, yeah, partially where Treasurer is. Where one half, oh no, that's right, HR, where HR is, that's right, that's IT.
And that committee meeting room, that's where Michael's office is.
No, you're looking, nope, you've got it turned around.
Now I get it, okay.
Does he, this is, this is a question you're still.
That's right, okay, switching spots, okay, now I get it, that's why I couldn't make sense, so I need to flip this.
Yes, probate is where probate is, and that won't change.
Yeah.
So that helps.
This makes sense.
And deeds gets all that space that Michael has, that Monica and Mary have, that, that Brittany has. And then, uh, HR would be where IT is. Treasurer's, uh, Mary and Monica would move into what is now the, the deeds registrar, and UT. UT is moving to the new space at EOC. But someone doesn't occupy his office, and so, I mean, if we just move this stuff somewhere, that's, that's not an issue. And then Michael would have what is now the, I guess it's a breakfast, breakfast look in the.
Yeah, there's one big room with machinery in it, and a big, a big copier, a math room, I guess, and.
I made that up to Michael, which way he wants to do that, and one, the big room for himself, and he has the, the, what is now the kitchen, it's, it's conference area. You know, but Michael would get those two, two rooms there. Then there is a, an entryway there where the photocopier is, which is just a small place. And then right outside that door would be, would be Brittany, and she would act as receptionist for the public, for pretty much all the offices that didn't start along the way, I guess. And Brittany would have possibly low count of the length there is now when you walk into deeds, and, and. The main entry to our meeting space would be in front of Brittany, and right across from Brittany on the opposite corner would be. It's a combination break room for the staff on that floor, and meeting room for people that, that needed the space to meet. Now, they came, that, yes, that the EOC is built, and, uh, everybody left this room, and this room didn't get used for two years, but the jail, this could become, you know, meeting space, which is what we don't have there, we don't have any meeting space. This would be a good meeting space, because once they vacate it, because our, only they will ever, that would be, actually, the door. So you imagine a good chance to, you know, provide, prove it to the community.
And all those factors that I'm, like, you talked about, that benefit this.
I've talked all across, yes, yes, about this, about the need. It's like I told him, I said, I'm not asking you to support this, I mean, can you, you know, this really, this fast discussion.
Sure.
And I haven't heard any, you know, comments, I mean, other than Julie said, yes, those would meet my space needs where, where it grew. Uh, Monica, Mary, I haven't heard, you know, I don't know how you feel about space allocated to you.
So you're not moving any walls here, you're just.
No, I, I thought maybe, you know, as you enter Michael's office, between Michael's office and Monica's office, whatnot, there's a, there's a wall there, it makes a hallway. And I've suggested to Julie that it might be a good time to remove that, it wasn't necessary, she thought that she would probably keep that, keep that hallway. But, uh, other than that, we're not removing any, any walls, we're just erecting those in the deeds big room.
So in this section, are there, are these new walls here?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that's good.
And more interesting.
The end here, when the. Yeah, the dark ones.
Yeah, the dark ones. Have to look at the space.
So this is what's, this is all intents and purposes, September. Develop something like this, with a RFP and all that for January, is that even? For December, is that even possible?
Dennis. You've seen a copy of this.
Yep.
To build those, uh, we're basically putting a wall separating right down the middle of, uh, deeds. Then we're putting another wall to make that office.
Obsolete the north end, and then a few petition walls.
Yeah, and that is something you supervise, right? What do you think the cost of that, it would be?
I haven't really looked at cost, there's, there's, uh, a lot of accessory, uh, actions that have to take place as well, uh, heating and cooling, and wiring, IT, and so forth, but.
If you acted as a GC on that, so, and you, you handled the crafts separately, could we build the walls for us to, or bid price?
Almost certainly, almost.
She says ten grand, we can get mobile bins, is that correct?
Right, right.
That would be what you're talking about, ten grand, so if you went out there and contacted three craftsmen and.
Sure.
Get those walls built for Santa West?
Certainly.
Yeah, but this is, uh, this isn't just building a few walls, this is.
I know, but if he handled his crafts separately, in other words, his plumbing went down by a separate, under a separate sub, his wiring is separate sub, his heating, cooling is separate sub.
Ten grand is electrical, doesn't give you a very fine.
Yeah, well, and I think a lot would be able to sub it. So that's, that's the good news, but, uh, yeah, why don't you, why don't I put something together for the sixth one? Could happily do that. Actually, before that, within a few days, I can have information for you.
I feel we need to get back to the, the basic question here, this is that, do you agree that this is something you would like to do? Would you like to move that downstairs? Would you like to occupy that space? And we really need for employees to be honest with us, are you willing to relocate? Michael's got one of the best offices in this building and he's gonna lose it. How do you feel about that, Michael?
I am thoroughly happy.
Do you want to?
Oh, well, no, well, I, I think that one of the worries that I've had is when the court vacates this, you know, we've got a lot of extra space. And, you know, what are the opportunities there? And so far, the only opportunity I've heard is jail.
Sure, would you, would you, would the jail space?
With this?
Yeah, bringing federal prisons. Oh, well, yeah, I mean, we're gonna, they're gonna take worship this year.
Yeah, yeah, so that starts a domino effect. If we can, i- i- if we can do that with ARPA, as opposed on the backs of the communities, then.
You mean the expansion of the jail?
No, no, the renovation.
Renovation?
Yeah.
Well, so the renovation of the jail, of course, is going to be affected by the federal government, they don't pay for the expansion.
Well, and is that, is that real?
It doesn't make any difference because we're not gonna do it unless the government does it. In other words, there's, there's no reason for us to expand this because we don't have the tenants, we don't have the, you know, the renters. So if the government says, yes, we're gonna send you down a bunch of federal inmates if you let us expand to a jail. So we won't, they won't expand unless they send us people, they won't send us people unless they expand. So, I mean, we wouldn't build it on the hopes that.
Yeah, so, well, and then, you know, the other things that, you know, right now we're just talking about spaces, but paying for the extra. We have to make sure that that tenant pays for, it's gonna require more people and it's gonna require, you know, a lot of moving parts. But it sounds like. And are we gonna know that before we lose the ability to do that?
Well, the federal government would build that today. I mean, that offer is on the table right now. The problem is for us is that we don't know this is coming on the table four years down the road when the courts leave. It'd make some difference. If it's not on the table, it's an issue, we just don't, you know. The, uh, whether we, whether they use this space or not, I say, I, I really would like to get our meeting space that downstairs. If you look at the, the stuff that these people have to drag up here every meeting day and the inconvenience of us being dislocated from, you know, from the primary staff. I, I'd like to get to act down there and get a, and get a meeting space that would accommodate more people. We had the opportunity without dislocating.
I, I think it's definitely worth, Dennis, getting some ideas together about what he thinks cost for me as a, as I was doing the general contractor part. And obviously, I also want to make sure that we're not ruffling feathers on the main floor by different people around so that, you know, there's bad ill feelings about the whole thing. It's just a necessity for us, but.
Well, if we don't get fire from that.
It's, it's, you have to have fire from, from everybody there.
And Michael, would you? I think they might be more willing to be candid with you about this whole thing. I mean, would you be willing to just have a discussion with your department, get some information, see what they think? Maybe we can have something, yeah.
All right. All right, so it looks good there. Let's get to the easy part, budget.
Project seventeen.
All right, that's good. Let's jump to, uh, department seventeen to start us off.
I guess there's nobody here representing humane.
Armond fifty-two is what?
Armond fifty-two is community benefits.
It's just a three percent increase.
Just a three percent increase, yeah.
Can they explain?
Yeah, we have a question, it's part of our, I mean, we're essentially saying that's our, our call, our call, so.
Anything to tell us how it's going?
Um, things went well, uh, now that, now that COVID is kind of, out of, more out of the picture than it was before, um, we're, we're back to running our full academy with a local instructor. Where we had the last couple of years, we hired an elderly instructor, um, Chief Karen Murphy, uh, Murray from the town office, rival, fire department, uh, is now our lead instructor, is doing very well for our program. We, this is the first year, last year was the first year that we started with nineteen students and ended with nineteen students. So, um, it's nineteen fully qualified firefighters back in the field after, after COVID and stuff. They're firefighter one, firefighter two, um, nationally recognized firefighters. So we're training, we're training, hopefully next year we'll be bringing more than that in. But we're training up to like twenty, twenty-five firefighters a year, um, bringing them in and giving them all the same education year after year, so it's consistent. So that when, when we call in mutual aid from one department into another, which every department has to use a mutual aid in the superior, because no single department is big enough to handle it. You know, even your full-time departments, they're, they're not big enough to handle most scenes on their own. They're bringing in qualified firefighters, so it's not, when, when we get a firefighter on the scene, we know what they know, what they're capable of.
And are they sticking around?
Cause for the most part, yes. Uh, we do, there is a certain turnover, uh, but for the most part, the, the volunteer firefighters that are, that are basically what we're reaching out to, most of those stay.
I have a question, do you have any questions?
Um, no, regarding the budget, uh, I'm just curious though, we do have a request from the town of Orno for, uh, that type one, the Nobskop County has this materials response team. Have you ever heard of that?
Yes.
You ever been doing work for them?
Um, there was a time when the city of Ellsworth was a support team for them. Um, but Orno, Orno is the only hazmat team in the area, truly true hazmat team in the area. So.
And when you say this area as well?
Yes.
So there's nothing in Hancock County for?
Nothing for a full hazmat team. These guys are a full, fully funded hazmat team.
How often, and, and give me an example, when you would call?
The last time that I know of Orno coming down, one incident, we had, um, a powder incident at the, um, fire, or banking trust building on Avery, Avery Lane, that was, that was a number of years ago.
When you say, now, what's that mean?
Um, that was during the, um, anthrax scares.
Oh, I see.
So we, somebody got a, somebody got a, a letter envelope with, um, some white powder in it. So automatically, we brought in the hazmat team. It's the last time that I know of calling in a full hazmat team, but there is substantial hazmat around this county.
So I.
Between items going to check lab and your blueberry, blueberry, um, facilities around.
I've suggested that, uh, we talk with the E and A about this. Better sense of it. I don't think I need to have it right now.
Well, the only reason I'm thinking is, is that.
We haven't related.
What do you mean?
It's presentation and this question from Orno, completely separate issues.
So if we consider funding, my, my thing was is that if we were going to consider some funding level for them, could be incorporated into the requirements and have them take care of.
I'm madly opposed to funding Orno. It, it's not a legitimate request and I'm happy to include the details as well.
Yes, we should talk about that then.
Well, I say, it's like, like, like Director Sankey said, these are two separate, very highly separate issues.
We, we do not train our, we, we give our, um, students basic hazmat. So basically it's like hazmat recognition, hazmat operation, so they can operate on scenes, including, you know, like fuel oil spills, gasoline spills.
That we fund.
That, yeah, that.
Yeah, that E and A funds and training for all the departments in the county all year long.
Yeah.
But specifically for the students at Fire Academy.
Yeah.
In addition to any funding that you make available to the association for the conduct of the academy. Perfectly.
All right. Thank you, I'm sorry I had to wait.
Oh, no problem.
And we will probably send this along to the VAC and its kind of present form, and you know that process well.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting.
No problem, thank you so much.
All right, well, since we're on this, why don't we just, uh, we should just finish up. Seventeen.
Yep.
There it is, three percent. Ask the, any questions for the three percent, which is the call we're gonna do anyway, so to be as done.
Yeah.
Okay.
So department seventeen is done.
All right, now, issues.
On the revenues. I'm not sure I fully understand that.
I think it's just, they are basically the placeholder.
Yes.
Okay, so that we had a transfer or something like that, have we given token into that? Obviously, we have some revenue account that would apply to. But if you look at it historically, we don't have a lot of income.
Yeah, like nothing.
On the expenditure side, you have a question. Why? So, uh, treasurer.
No.
So treasurer has. Okay, so this one does also include HR, which at some point we may want revisit, have that discussion. Some of these costs are as a result of having, and they were last year and then projected forward this year, result of having like a full-time HR person as well, so. So you gotta keep in mind, that's not just all of you and myself and the clerk, and the assistant and all that.
What happened was the HR manager that we had wanted to do some training, wanted to buy some fancy desk stuff. And we, it hadn't really even been budgeted because at the time, we didn't, you know, we had an HR person, but she wasn't involved in the budgeting process. So it almost sometimes feels like HR could have their own set of expenditure budget lines. And, and now they share it with, with Michael and the needs of that department, of your department.
It might make sense separated out just because it's a cost in our.
Right.
So, this is the point.
Right. It'll also be reflected by the needs of the new HR. Do you have a different view?
I mean, it's part of the reason also why I haven't really, because of the transition, haven't done it this year. Because really, it seems like that would be something that over the next.
Year.
Year, that we can start really looking at pulling those costs out, what exactly would they be? And again, her vision and what you prove, where you want to go with that position as well as moving forward, so. It seems, this year it just seems a little premature to start carving everything up, in my opinion.
I understand why it's the way it is now because traditionally, well, it was a shared thing too. You had half HR and you had half deputy county administrator, so. So it really ultimately did tie back into the. So we really gotta see how it shakes out, is your recommendation?
I mean, that's what I would say, but, uh, putting it on the record right now, so one, you're aware that those costs are in there. But two, yeah, I think we've talked about it and might even have done it this year, but now given the transition, it's, to me, it doesn't seem like the right time to be doing it.
We must agree that we're contributing to.
That's the CBA, the ones that you're doing in place of department seventeen now for the other third-party requests and stuff. So you're matching that, that's that match that you put in.
So we, we, um, we didn't contribute to the ortho imagery, right, because we paid it out of our, or something.
Well, we haven't even done anything, I mean, that's one that might have fallen through the cracks, I think, because we haven't really done anything with it. So I know there was some discussion about using our to do that, but there's a twenty, what, almost twenty thousand dollar balance in there right now. So that's the question, really, one of the questions is.
Plus balance to me.
Yeah, yeah, in the reserve account.
We decided several years ago, it, it comes up every five years, we've got to set aside. Well, sixty-five hundred a year for five years and it's been.
And I know we had talked about different, yeah, different options and, and our as well, but I don't know that if we ever went back and officially said, let's go ahead and.
It's a cut, so it's a cut, how long's the contract for you?
It's a five years, every five years. Every five years, we, now, my question is, is that can you, if we've only been three years, we want to pay for another five years of our, can we, can we somehow close that out to another part of you?
I'd have to look at it and see where. I'd have to look at it and see where we're at, so I couldn't tell you a hundred percent, but I can come back and see.
See.
One of the questions.
Well, don't wait, isn't that kind of project done? With somebody else, like communities that update this?
I've never done one here, so I'm not sure historically how.
What do you mean?
I can't forget how it all plays out. Yeah. So I feel like the towns can also pay for higher resolution, higher resolution scans or whatever you want to call it. Uh, but the county's providing a base level and if they wanna, if they need more detail than they, also that on their own other towns.
I think it is, because I think you, like UT does that higher resolution. They take days from the room.
Yeah.
That's what I didn't understand. So there's a basic level at the county and then the towns are just enhancing that.
That's my understanding. You know, they're selling, they're selling, they're selling global service, global tier as a service and we're paying for our ability to access that data, right? Standard.
That is correct and, and you're, you're, you are correct. The county pays for the basic resolution. It can pay additionally for enhanced imagery, but some towns choose to select for higher resolution imagery. So they, they take up all that.
Okay, but under, so we are providing the towns and then they're enhancing.
Correct.
So they don't pay a fee if they don't take the enhanced version, Andy?
Uh, they do not, is my understanding. That, that's the way it was, they say when the initial overflights took place ten years ago. It was universal, we made available to everyone, but certain towns, and at that time it was Bar Harbor.
Yeah.
And Northeast Harper that paid for the higher enhanced resolution.
Service, so, alright, so I, I would like to see if we can, if we can use some funds, these benefits still at rate in the county, if we can use those funds to extend out. That'd be great. If we can't, that's fine. We will. Yeah, if you can't, just to like. We'd have to avoid the present funding here arrangement, one of the contracts. I just need to see, but it's possible, I guess, whether it makes any sense. Who's the agency? Major IRS agency. So it might not make sense to do it, but I believe we should at least know. Look, nothing else. Can we pay off the existing? Ready us ring, can you pay off? Sorry, I'll pay. Well, that's right, to pay, pay the whole amount.
Yeah.
There isn't anything.
Right now, I feel like it'll be served, which is what we should be doing, it's just I also like.
I'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
I suspect. You pay. It's not good.
Alright, what else have you got? Can you see anything? The, the, the copier maintenance.
So basically, I mean, a lot of that is the increase in copies, so that, because we get charged above a certain percentage for anything that we exceed, and obviously there's been more copies done because of a variety factors, but also because we have more active HR as well, so that's part of it. Also, right now, I, I put in for supplies to basically keep that secondary of the old copy that we have on my office. It, it's still a workhorse that we're finding and, and basically we have, what, four or five different people.
It may come in handy.
Going to that one copier right now.
During the renovations.
Yeah, and if we do break up, then that's gonna be further, you know, so right now, it just would be the cost of toner supplies and things like that and any maintenance part of that, which, you know, would be factored in, but um, I suspect probably some of the copying may go down, but right now, I'm just trying to base it on what, what we've got this year, try to clean that somewhat on. But the additional cost beyond that would be just, like, keeping the secondary cheap going, so.
We keep call, call of copiers, but it's really a copier, scanner, printer.
Facts.
Yeah.
Here. It's all a lot of that.
Yeah.
Alright, what else you guys got? Anything? Alright, so the commissioners. Thank you. Your interest income.
Yeah.
It's expected to have less potential for interest.
So, where in talks right now with our Machias Savings Bank group? Um, who is new to, to Machias Savings Bank, to the office in Ellsworth? And she's amazed with the rates that we've been receiving.
I like that.
No. So I think they're, I think they're gonna bring us to it and do something about it.
They wanted us to be down around, a variable rate down around three and I said, no. Said, right now, we got five point one, so. Tell me, yeah, five point one, so you, well, you tell me what I want, I want us to be around the same thing now. Global factors, there's another things that go into that number, but we weren't satisfied with what they were trying to sell us, I guess, so. I, on your behalf, I suggested they come back with a better offer, so.
Oh, then, you know, maybe if it's that far, maybe we need to go to our big.
Well, I mean, we've extended the service anyway, what, another two or three years, I think, unless we had a justifiable termination in there. So, but, uh, I mean, to a degree, they're not incorrect, because if, if inflation does continue to drop, the, the thought process is the feds are gonna drop rates, how far they drop them and how long that continues, so I mean, realistically, we won't be at the same level. Question is, is just how much might we do sound on, and then back to part two. I have, not as much. We're getting, we're getting rid of. So, I mean, so there's obviously multiple factors that go into that.
There's been rulings of the feds extending the deadlines for our finances.
Yeah.
Really, you, you, is it possible? You think that would come?
Well, it would have to be probably a legislative action at this point, so, and I, I don't say it's impossible, but I, it's not that I've read in anything that's come through.
Congress should have to approve that?
Yeah, I mean, it would be a legislative thing at this point.
Might even be drugs. You know, I'm not sure they're, sure they're looking to add that, not.
I gotta believe that so many, you know, entities up there, like. It was so conservative, many of them. Doing it, but the feds wouldn't tell you how to spend it.
Alright, so yeah, that question for you is on your expenditure side, so I'm not sure why we're only giving the treasure part of the job a one point nine percent instead of just doing three point two, all the other. Just my choice. I think it should be the same as everybody else, because I think it just looks weird. Okay. I mean, that I'm trying to like, tell you. I'm just trying to keep it honest, but I will, I mean, I will.
I think three point two is.
Okay.
We're hearing, and all on the scale. Do you combine, uh, Gary, we should know that much OT.
Uh, no, I, I did roll in a little bit of OT into Gary's position.
We totally have had that.
Because we're so limited, every now and then, it's, it would be nice to to be able to have that option.
We have had the OT before.
Uh, very well. The audit cost. The audit cost reflects the, when you contact.
And your thousand dollars in the reserve equipment, it's just for hopefully our future copier.
Right.
And you dies.
Right.
Yep.
payroll services. Yep.
But that's, we're getting rid of the time tracking.
So you get rid of time track services and get the pace.
So just a nominal increase in eighty-five to twenty-one five.
Yes.
You just, you just.
I don't necessarily like the, the percentage calculator.
Well, yeah, because it shows line for line as opposed to.
That's right, it's.
Yeah. You'd have to blend those two numbers.
Right.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Or lease, that's our fixed population, right? I forget, so when did that happen?
Nothing. We approached and tried and tried to nail down Mr. Gray. We, we made his efforts.
We got him to pay the amount that was owed to us, so.
Yep.
We're even with that.
They agreed.
Uh, it's one of those things that we're at a negotiation, it's what price are they gonna throw out, what would we take, and their argument initially was that, you know, they're pretty generous and my argument back to them was if you had to get the same space tomorrow, let's say this place burned down and you needed space, you're not gonna find it probably at what you are getting this for and then.
Not gonna fire for half.
We went back and went back and forth, but we just, it's a matter of setting people in the room and fighting it out, so.
It's for your effort.
So they have no lease, right?
They, well, see, the lease, the, the lease continued on until it was revoked, as I remember.
Right.
So it accounted for like an increased period of a couple of years, and then after that, it just basically stayed until whatever happened, until one party or the other basically terminated. I have to assume that the thought process was, they thought all this was gonna happen right now and that the courts would be gone. Around this time here in any way.
The last time we made a, a real request for uh, an increase, the state uh, acknowledged that and, and said, but we're conducting a space study right now, let us finish this study and we'll renegotiate afterwards, and we never saw that person again. Mr. Henmore retired and now we have Jeremy Grant, he uh, is elusive.
Well, at least we should be going after COLA over less.
Oh, we thought we built that in, we talked about building that in with a new MOU, but they're not willing to discuss.
I mean, that basically would be, the question is that what, what the, the commissioners want. It's like hard, hard.
Is that get, get out?
They want to change the law, right?
Well, I mean, part, part of it will require apply, provide space, but the part of it would be the question. And initially, there were two people there, so it was just, Mr. Gray, it was another representative of finance, part of the state office as well. Uh, initially, he kind of was on the understanding, like, they were giving us space as well, leasing space to us, so it would be a wash, obviously. We had to send him back, we had to give him all the agreements, because they didn't even have copies of all the agreements. And that's the last conversation we had, is they were going back to evaluate what was there and what needed to be done.
So this, and this is a twenty nineteen figure. Yeah, that we deal with initially, so we've had nothing since then.
So I think we need to call them on a daily basis.
Yeah, but the truth of the matter is, if in fact sometime in the next two, three, four years, they leave, taking that all the litigation, an increase in costs, very.
I think that's kind of their position too, might have mentioned that.
Just stick it out, they say.
Yeah, that's.
We'll be gone soon.
Kind of where they're at with it, I think.
Alright. So it's our, now just some expenditures.
You see, most of my increases are just areas where I'm taking over.
Shifting.
Jail expenses and some, the most, uh, one of the more expensive ones there, eating fuel, when I took that over that, um, line for them, I realized it also be propane for the jail kitchen and the ignition of the wall, a few other accessory items, so. That's where it, we're running pretty close to them, those tolls.
Propane to the heating fuel, yes?
Yes.
Price, were you already, so was the heating fuel fine? Did you already have jail expenses in there before?
We did. This will be.
Ten percent increase.
This will be the second year that we did that.
So did an increase of the city building accounts?
Uh, that is to absorb the jails expenses. Uh, getting. We talked about a few expenses, but, uh, you know, names specifically, but it seems like a lot, like their plumbing bills and and their uh, emergency cleaning bills and other things, that as they get these bills, they are have uh, saying, well, listen, Megan's paying these now, so they send them to me. So I'm kind of adjusting on the fly to try to, to get them under the cap as far as we can, but buy some time, right?
We've done a lot of capital work up there.
Yes, that's all I'm gonna. Uh, yes, and would expect that costs like emergency plumbing repairs will plummet, will be reduced dramatically, but their uh, uh, budget item of whatever it was, forty thirty-five thousand, if I'm assuming, twenty of that, this is what this is reflected here, because uh, or twenty-five, because they are still gonna maintain some small operating expenses there by their kitchen, uh, operating chemicals, laundry chemicals, floor products and so forth, those, those including source uh, test control and things like that. Still undetermined whether I would be paid for that or not at this time. There's a lot, lot of small items under that big umbrella.
A little advantage.
You gotta, you gotta, my own.
On the wages part of it, there, there is, well, you'll see, I'm in solidarity with other department heads regarding the disparity in yearly increases. And I'm not saying that that is a deal breaker for me, well, I just, I share the same concerns and want to be that statement, of course. I'll take whatever you give me.
I understand.
Um, I mean, that.
We haven't determined anything yet on it.
Yeah, no, no, it's okay, and, and my only point is, I'm not talking one way or the other, but that's, that's twenty-nine thousand of the hundred and eleven, that's all.
Yeah. Good, she got anything else on?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it staying the same?
I don't know.
Sure, actually, gonna.
For what?
Oh, two percent.
Two percent.
It should be no surprise what the expenditure is here, see, it's an increase. Several of the service contracts. Bought last year.
Yeah, no, I, that's coming.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yes, or on my service plan, on my service contract, we had one, it was actually EMA grant. We got our radio console, we got the last one we purchased that, because it came with a two-year. That was included in what EMA paid for, so we got that one last console. So now out of that, we're paying for that service. Well, I was, I was lucky, I was fortunate Brown's working me to get locked in for several years. So that price won't go up, regarding the annual services, what for a couple of years, then just the regular standard increases for the other. Other contracts we have, other services, things of your order are. Right, on the towers.
Your reserve account, you pay, solving money away from a ticket project?
I'm looking at probably between our, our ELC, the backup dispatch, we're gonna need some equipment up there. And I don't know about, you know, what's gonna, what's the store for us in five years with. It just gives us a concussion for, you know, if I have a dispatch console that breaks and I need it replaced, that's, those are twenty, thirty thousand dollars a piece.
Yeah, it's just. projection for the future. It's always.
Stuff, you know. We need to add these components, something like that, it's there. We find that we need another, we need to add a dispatch console or a service, it's there.
Also, this is a bit flat.
Yeah, I try not to read anything, I was looking at actual costs on things.
Oh, again, except for top of it.
So, the time contract.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And with new service contracts, that's the only other big issue.
Yeah.
Don't, don't do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have a good time.
So there, there was a possibility that she might not be able to be here during this, so she did. Say for me to kind of pinch hit as best I can. Next questions are, I mean, most of it's pretty flat, it's not seeing any.
She talked about a piece of legislation if passed, we do substantial increases.
Yeah.
That legislation obviously couldn't pass till next year.
That's the way I understand this one, because they wouldn't start until a new session again, so.
If you.
Unless that was one of the carryover.
I can imagine that being rooted, so it'd be.
Yeah.
Late season, late year, it would even come back.
I would assume.
So no matter what happens, it's still gonna be.
Probably, well, I mean, it won't have, it's unlikely it would have a full impact, yes. And almost like a whole year's worth of.
Well, it's in, most ninety days is like September, isn't it, something like that?
Yeah, that was, if they started in July or six.
No matter how significant it was, it's still.
And these increases are basically like. For the budget last year was, yeah, these are flat.
Anything.
Come with a little thing.
No.
How was that? We haven't heard much.
Was it tidy more than you want?
I'm sorry, I'm a bit focused. Increase fees.
But she did, didn't she have something?
She looked at some of the.
I thought, I mean, I don't, I don't believe it was to that extent that the other one was, but. All right, so animal control, this is a little unique because there's a couple of different elements attached to this. But we've had basically close to now eight years worth, I'm really, back to last year, this, kind of years worth activity. I think this year so far, especially the last few months during summer, the call lines way down. So I mean, he's, he's probably averaging ten, eleven hours a week maybe.
Really?
Yeah, so when you look at what I proposed here, the, especially with personnel's part-time services, the dilemma. Is basically taking what his hourly rate was, or should be for the current year. And, and multiplying the three point two percent, just like we did last year. He started out twenty-five, we put the three percent last year and took him up to the hourly rate. And then multiply that times the budgeted twenty hours. But what that does is obviously, right now, overinflates because he's not getting twenty dollars. So it makes this budget look larger than it is, and then when it comes in, comes in, we're gonna have some money. Probably sitting on the table that lapses and all that. So the question becomes, do we try to reestimate what his actual time might be? Or hope that the volume continues to go up and we continue to add towns or cities to, to support that service in the call line? Hopefully, we'll start to increase as well. Well, but the question is, the question is, but the, the, the. Issue becomes then, it's when you're trying to get a budget that doesn't look like we're making tons of profit off this, and, and certainly not the intent. Uh, you know, do you, do you try to base it on those factors of estimates or do you kind of get closer to what the actual is? And then the further point would be looking at revenue side, do we need to charge the twenty-five hundred? Or can we try to give them a little bit of a break until it doesn't go up?
Well. A year's not a long time.
No.
And a year's, a year's worth of history is, I mean.
But we have, we have lost obviously one town. We have a couple of towns that are kind of, a lot of it comes down to elections. So new people come in, they're like, why the heck are we paying the county that? And then all of a sudden now you've got them coming back to us and like, well, we're not gonna just pay twenty-five hundred dollars to secure you having something. And then they move on.
But they're statutorily obligated to do it. They could possibly do it for twenty-five hundred dollars.
Depends on their call lines, activity, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, those are the arguments with Nate, plus the headache. I mean, it's like, you don't have to do basically much of anything other than these, you know, X, Y, and Z, make sure the dogs are licensed. All of that.
One, one town told me it's the best twenty-five hundred dollars they've spent, like.
That's what I did, that's, but.
And I did do some costing, we talked briefly about that, like per capita things, but then you're gonna have people all over the place. You have some who would be paying like five thousand dollars, make some down fifteen. So then there's like disparity.
Well, or, okay, per capita or maybe per capita by animals in the town, you know, how, how finicky do you get?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'm not sure that we can make any adjustments in this after only one year. I think one year is a good measure, but I.
Like, let's wait.
Yeah.
It's my view.
They have a fair amount of that.
Yeah.
We don't contract the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see.
Oh.
One of her involved in those.
Yeah, well, it wasn't part of that contract, but they're still on the.
The boys department handles it.
That would be a separate contract.
Yes, yes.
They can't possibly do it for twenty-five hundred dollars.
My first opinion is that we're not out there lobbying for offering a service, hey, if you want it, go get it. If you don't want it, you don't wanna pay for it, don't sell. I mean, I think you should, I think this is what the county should be doing, is making these services available, they're not even enough now.
Which is why I think Michael's saying we shouldn't necessarily wanna be showing it as a, as a big money maker. But if we're providing it as a service.
Close, especially when, you know, you got a factor in the car that hasn't been factored in, you know, the, the cost.
You'll see some adjustments here because we didn't have, we still have a little bit of both. So before we were, we didn't have the vehicle fully in function while we were doing it, so we had some expenses to lower paying mileage. Yeah. Mileage went away, except for I hid a little bit in there because that car's gonna at some point break.
And be replaced.
And then we'll have to do stuff, but.
Of course you can't, we replaced everything.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but knock, knock, knock on thick wood.
Okay. Are you not proposing letting any service funds lapse at the end? Reserve those decades?
Well, um, I mean, you, you would have to take specific action to, to.
Wouldn't just be a good example.
And we can look at how that can be structured, I guess.
Monica?
I, I would think you can certainly, if you, if you wanna increase the revenue line, like we could, we could look at. Yeah, there's no reason why we couldn't.
If you could reject at some point, what you thought the, the surplus balance would be, we could, we could look at the revenue.
Even if it was a small.
Well, it was small round.
Well, and the vehicle's perfect example.
It seems like we should, we could feel something for the vehicle.
Yeah, that should be shown.
Well, I mean, the reserves, technically, there's some money in there in the reserves to do that, but the question is, is how, how much? You know, my immediate concern is I don't wanna have somebody look at this budget from another community and be like, this is nuts. County's making all this extra money off us and then charging us this, because that's one, it's not an accurate betrayal. Because the budgetment's only good as the estimate, so then if we start looking like we're elevating the initial budget request. With the understanding that we're gonna turn around and keep all that money. Okay, you know, if I'm a manager of one of those towns, I'm gonna come back to you and say, hey, what's going on? And yes, it, you know, that's up to them if they want it or not, but I mean, it's a conversation that. As long as you're progressing towards refining it, that, I'm fine with that, but I think we just need to make sure we're clear on how.
You're gonna dig up to Crystal, how, because this cannot end up being a case of where we're not making enough money.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And we're taxing towns that are not participating, so I mean.
That's right, well.
The users have got to pay the bill, but again, not to the point where we're making tons of money.
Well, here's a perfect example, vehicles, right, three thousand dollars.
Well, the assumption is you're not gonna buy brand new one, you're gonna probably give us a hand-me-down for this department from one of the.
Okay, but it's not gonna be free.
Oh, no, it wasn't last time.
Yeah, that's right. Well, it was free last time.
Well, not when they.
Not when they.
Not when everything got washed out.
Because of the fix.
While taking the stuff off, which.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For the issue, mechanical issues.
Right.
Maintenance, all of the stuff.
But it wasn't reflected here, so my, my point is, three thousand dollars annual cost, reserving three thousand dollars. Could easily be five, in fact, that would be, or six, would be closer to the actual reserve needed when it comes time to.
This depends on your strategy of what you're gonna try to do.
So.
Well, I, I hand-me-down, hand-me-down group of those only, twenty-eight, ten thousand.
Yeah.
If we're getting three or four thousand miles a year out of these vehicles, then if the rate is going, because he's always working five and four hours a week.
Yeah, but then there's insurance, there's all these other, I mean, my, the point I'm trying to make is. This is not a money-making enterprise. No, and, and that's, that's the point, but the problem, the problem is the, the payroll proportion of it. You know, if you try to look at what you estimate for revenue, we, that's pretty, a estimate, pretty fixed, obviously, on our fees. And the stipend fees, whatever, we know that if you get ten communities, it's gonna be twenty-five, you know, a hundred each time ten. So you're gonna have twenty-five thousand revenue there, and then it's just whatever the actual costs are for reimbursing. But if you look at it on paper, you could be like, well, jeez, this is saying this year, like, this is up fifty thousand, but that's not realistic. Because that's not what we're actually paying, and that's not what we're actually collecting. So what you have in front of you, the question is, do I try to adjust some of those numbers right now? And, and try to make it look a little bit more terms of what's realistic, especially if you're looking at maybe trying to reserve some of the funds that are left at the end of the year? Or do we just kind of continue for another year or two down the road we're going and then make adjustments if we need to with that?
What I hope reserving balance is that we have a subjective, an objective number at the end of every year as to how well we did. Whether or not over a period of two, three years, we can make some adjustments based upon our history.
Well, here's, there's that point, but, well, vehicle expense, five hundred dollars. Yeah, basically. We know that's not a realistic number.
Well, it depends again, I mean, that gets back to again usage, so.
Oh, usage, but it's also a year older, it's already an old car, you know? So I think there needs to be some, there at least needs to be COLA adjustments on, on these numbers. You, you know, like the maintenance and repair, the, uh, utilities that.
Michael, I mean, I'll listen to Michael, he's saying that the twenty-five hundred dollar fee that we're charging is based on them serving twenty hours a week. And they're not, they're serving ten or eleven, so what happens is, is that there's extra money in what we're charging them for services that can be used towards some. Any, any, any.
Of these other things.
Right.
That's why they need to be adjusted up.
Well, I don't think we, I think, I think you leave the numbers he's got and you develop a reserve for your service, identify that amount, and then.
This, this functionally does the same thing.
I mean, ultimately, realistically, I don't see getting to an average of twenty hours right away unless a lot of things happen, but. I mean, that's the question, do you adjust the payroll a little bit based on estimated hours or do you?
A lot of dollars.
Well, I gotta tell you though, that if he's only getting ten, eleven hours, and he's anticipating a certain amount of revenue, he's not getting it. We might lose him if we don't increase the rate.
Yeah.
So, you know.
I mean, there's. There's arguments all the way around with that, for sure.
Well, the bottom line is that we leave this as is for this year, wait for another year's history to. Does that make sense?
Well.
Is that what you're suggesting, Michael?
Well, he's suggesting doing something with the reserves, so.
Well, I mean, I think if, if you think that. What I hate to do is increase these costs, which might be reasonable, I mean, five hundred dollars is a pretty, you know, conservatively conservative aspect of maintenance, no doubt about it. But again, we're also raising, in this proposed budget, based on just the hourly rate increase of three point two percent. We're raising twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars. And we're, we're not gonna be close to that unless things dramatically start changing. So there's still.
You're not gonna spend that much budget there?
Not, because it was budgeted based on twenty hours a week and we're not averaging that, so. So there would be some at the end of the day, but that's, so that's why I'm saying, do we try to adjust the average hours that we estimate? Not his rate of pay or anything, but just the average hours, assuming it's gonna be less. And then up some of these other ones to make it more accurate to what the actual cost may be, but we don't know because we don't have a lot of expenses beyond the initial. Stuff that, that once we got the vehicle in, we haven't had a lot of draws yet.
I think paying that's only one year of history, what do we care as long as at the end of the budget year, we get net of expenses? That's what I'm saying, that, you know, then after a couple of years, maybe we get more data to some. You feel some of these to be adjusted?
I mean, maintenance could be, and if you are reserving, assuming that you're not gonna take the same approach that you did last time, which is get a hand-me-down, that's. Say a piece of junk, but I mean, certainly we had to do a lot to get that back to.
Yeah, you had to do it.
Safe use, then.
You spend.
Then you'd have to do that, but if you're getting a, a decent hand. Then you'd have to do that, but if you're getting it, a decent hand-me-down, that. Doesn't require a lot of mileage because we're not seeing tons of that's, then. So you're basically able to do that.
You're basically budgeting ten percent of what it costs you this year. I know you're not gonna have all those expenses, but I think they're gonna be about five hundred.
But he's also budgeting for twenty hours of these personal services, knowing that it's gonna be close to the ten. I mean.
Yeah.
After Michael's question, do you wanna increase your maintenance and decrease your, your revenue?
Best estimated hours probably.
Ten for ten, let's see what the numbers are.
Thank you, boy, I think that makes sense.
Alright. But yeah, next year we'll have, at that point, two and a half.
Yeah.
So hopefully that would, would see some better trends.
So done with that.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, executive session.
You ready? Our executive session is permitted by, by MRSA title. One such a four or five, six thing could discuss the acquisition of real property.
Second of all, you, others in favor?
Hi.
Alright.
Hi.
Andy, you wanna get that more, please? Alright, we're back out of executive session, nothing to report. Any other business going on?
One quick thing.
Yep.
For those that are having their caucuses, after you get the results, can you forward that information on to me so I can reach out to those people sooner rather than later?
We have attendance records in minutes at the beginning.
As well, yep.
Mine is tomorrow.
Yep, and there's two, the two today, so.
Alright. Sounds good. Anything else? Commissioner's gone, let's go down. We're adjourned, guys. Circle? Others in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.